Everyone can hear each other?
Yes, Commissioner.
You're on the Zoom call, I cannot hear anything.
We can't hear you.
Commissioner Rob Moore, I can hear you fine.
We can't hear you.
Okay, great, so you're on the Zoom, so I think Zoom participants can hear one another.
We still can't hear you, so hold on a second.
I still not yet heard anything from the Commission Chambers.
Okay, try it again, see if we can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you, Commissioner Lee, can you hear us?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. All right, well, welcome everyone to our meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. As is our custom, we will begin with a prayer reading or a thought, followed by the pledge. Today, I think we already have someone who has volunteered to lead us in a prayer. I believe that is Elder Watson.
No, close, really close.
Walton, sorry.
I'm just a chaplain too, so, let I clarify that. First, I want to read to you something that might help. For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder. These will be his royal titles: wonderful counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the prince of peace. His ever-expanding peaceful government will never end. He will rule with perfect fairness and justice from the throne of his Father. He will bring true justice and peace to all the nations of the world. This is going to happen because the Lord of Heaven's armies has dedicated himself to do it. And you too. Let's pray together. Our dear Father in heaven, we are so grateful for the many blessings that we have. And even though right now there is turmoil on the planet and in this country, right now, we are here with the best people on the planet. We have so many things to be thankful for in this valley, Father. And yes, we have a few problems, but the people in this room, Father, need your blessings so they will do the very best to fix problems and to help those who need it. Father, today we pray for Washington DC. As you know, there are some big problems there. Father, we also pray for the state of Utah, where our legislature is. Father, we pray for our Utah County Commission and all of the people working here, that they may watch out for those that live in this area and those that visit this area. Father, we also pray for the cities and their governments so that again, they can take care of their constituents and be a representation for them. And then finally, Father, we pray for the households in this valley going through many problems, whether it's finances, or education, or health, or whatever it might be. Father, we pray that you will be with each person in this valley. And that as the council meets today, as the Commission meets, that they will do everything possible to do the best for everyone that lives here and that visits here. Father, we are so grateful for the chance to talk to you, and we pray in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Amen, and thank you. Okay. Let's see, do we have a volunteer or perhaps one of the Commissioners to lead the group in the pledge?
We have a volunteer.
Great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we jump into building our agenda, I think a couple of things, first, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Sakovic here. This is his first meeting and first meeting of the year, and congratulate him on his victory and his recent swearing-in, and it's great to have you with us, Tom. And there will be more as it relates to that transition on the agenda. And then also, we need to recognize our January Employee of the Month. And, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, Commissioner Lee, who has that? Is that you who have the reading for that today?
Yep, I've got it.
Okay, great.
Okay, so our Employee of the Month is Haley Christensen. Come on up, or, or sit, whatever, eventually you have to come up anyway. You're gonna sit? Okay. You'll, you'll have to, here comes everybody in too. All right, I'm gonna read down through this. This is a couple of statements from those that you know, and I'll give you this copy afterwards. "I'd like to know, I'd love to nominate Haley Christensen. She is a go-to guru." Now, when I first read that, I thought we're talking about gurus across the street, you know, go-to gurus, but anyway. "She's a go-to guru in the Attorney's Office. Haley is a miracle worker in times of need and an encyclopedia of knowledge that is frequently tapped by everyone in the office. Haley has worn many hats through the years and through her roles, and though her roles have changed, she always made herself available to anyone who has a question, even if it's not necessarily part of her current assignment. Haley has a charm and a grace that is welcoming to all who meet her. She often helps persons out, other agencies who work with the Attorney's Office, or Utah County citizens in need. She goes out of her way to be a problem solver. When tasked with an unbearable challenge, they assign, like assigning attorneys their new office or hunting down furniture that they have borrowed. She works with each individual for the best outcome. We all go to Haley for anything and everything that she is most accommodating individual." And I'm gonna skip down to one more, there's more to it. There's one down here that I wanted to read from the, from the second one. I liked how the second one put it, I wanna read this, it says, "I would enthusiastically second the nomination." And I like that, I mean, it's so formal, right, you know, nomination and a second, anyway. And this is, this is what I thought was very touching. Talking about how she's involved, one particular circumstance stands out to me. Haley is working as a legal assistant on a homicide case involving a young adult who was killed. This victim's death has had a devastating effect on a number of people, including his single aging mother who relied on his help and in and around her home. When Haley became aware of this grieving mother's unmet needs, she and her husband went to work unsolicited. They showed up and spent time away from their family, hours, I'm sure, on a weekend, cleaning up this mother's yard and performing other acts of service. The only reason I became aware of this good deed was because his mother made a point of telling me about it while expressing her gratitude for Haley. This is just one circumstance that reflects so well on Haley's commitment to her work and in Utah County's Attorney's Office." And so, with that, thank you, well done, the Employee of the Month.
Commissioner Lee, do you mind if I say something very briefly?
Sure, you bet.
I just wanna congratulate Haley as the Utah County Attorney, and as the Utah County Attorney when I came into office in January of 2019. I was very much coming into an office which I was unfamiliar, both with the processes and the people. And Haley has gone out of her way to help me as the County Attorney to acclimatize myself and also to demonstrate her absolute desire to serve the residents of Utah County. And I have been so incredibly impressed with her capacity and her devotion. And, you know, many people, many people possess capacity but not devotion, and many people have devotion without capacity. But Haley manages to have both of those, capacity and devotion to her job, and I wanna thank her from the bottom of my heart and give her my heartfelt congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, we're back.
Okay, great. Well, we'll now go through the process of building our agenda. There are 12 items on our published consent agenda and 10 items on our published regular agenda. Anything that we will not, that is not held for discussion will be deemed approved on our consent agenda. And I don't believe I have anything on the consent agenda. I may have a note or happy to hold it for discussion. On number nine, I don't have anything else to hold on consent.
I have a couple, three through seven. I personally, I don't have an issue with it, but because I don't know the content of those meetings, I can't verify on the specifics of each of them. But I'm able to go ahead and approve them based on the experts that have already reviewed it in my behalf. So I would put that note in there. I'd like to hold number nine and put that into the regular agenda, if we may. There's a couple of thoughts I have with that.
Okay. Anything else on consent? Okay, so I understand we're holding number nine for discussion, and the remaining items, including three through seven, are being approved on consent but with the notes made by Commissioner Sakovic. Okay, anything on the regular agenda that folks would like to hold for discussion?
I don't have any.
I have none.
Okay. All right, so then we will turn to item number nine, which was to adopt a resolution to elect Tom Sakovic as Chair and William Lee as Vice Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for the year of 2021.
My thought is, when I came in as Commissioner, there were certain, I had some objectives that I wanted to meet based on what input I've received from citizens that I met throughout the county, from about 18 of the 24 mayors in the county. I've met all the department heads, some several times over. And I came away with some objectives that I need to make, or at least pursue more, with a greater focus. And what I did is, when I discovered that my name was on the agenda as perhaps being the Chair for this current year, yesterday at 3 o'clock, I spent some time in the state code and looking at its roles, and it even says Vice Chair if there is one. But I looked at the different roles of the Chair, and there's several different administrative honorarium-type roles that the Chair plays throughout the year for a variety of groups. And my concern was that if I were to accept being the Chair, then I would maybe be distracted from the objectives I've been trying to pursue, those objectives and the goals that I was elected to do. So I weighed that in, I weighed in what the County Commissions, or excuse me, the County Citizens have said, the Department employees have expressed to me, mostly Department Heads. And I thought that maybe what I should do is, instead of that, since Commissioner Ainge has served during his past year, 2020, as Chair, and I just arrived, and there again, I have some things I want to accomplish, my thoughts are that Commissioner Lee should serve as the 2021 Chair, and I'm happy to serve as Vice Chair. And thereby, we can then take up the normal rotation with 2022 and allow me to focus solely on the policies that came to my attention over the past several months within Utah County, and I can focus my first year on that. So those are my thoughts, and then secondly, I was thinking that maybe in the future agendas, the, maybe perhaps all we put on the agenda would be simply the nomination of Chair and Vice Chair, not necessarily an individual name. Any other thoughts you have, Commissioner Ainge?
No, I mean, I can respect that. I, I, you know, when I came into office, I think there was a natural rotation, and I also, I deferred for that during the first year. I guess perhaps there's a pattern that's coming there. So I placed this on the agenda as, I think for the rotation, I was happy to support you as the Chair, but I would certainly entertain a motion to switch the order of how this is written.
Yeah, I appreciate that compliment, but I, again, I would see other underlying issues that I don't wanna be distracted from, that's what my thoughts were.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
The motion, I would like to make a motion then that Commissioner Bill Eby Chair for 2021, that meet Commissioner Tom Sakovic serve as Vice Chair for 2021, and then that should get us back in the normal rotation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, as stated. May I make just a friendly addition, which is just saying, noting that that becomes effective immediately following this meeting?
That makes sense.
You want us to put full names in there, Dave?
Yeah, we will, well, I mean, we can add that to the resolution, we can add those names. But just for clarification, the, it would be an appointment until replaced, so it's not an appointment for a specific term, but until replaced, which typically ends up being a year, but that way you don't ever have a gap, so. Until replaced would be the preferred language for that.
Okay, so the language would be for a year unless otherwise replaced?
Or just until replaced.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 3-0. Okay, quick meeting. Well, I do know actually that we have a work session, so. But I guess first I would entertain some motions on our closed meetings.
I believe we need all four of them, so I'll make a motion that we approve and set a date, time, and location. That date, time, and location is after this, this date, following this, following our meeting at this location for this date, for agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10 that are on our regular agenda.
I conside of that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 3-0. Okay, we'll move into a work session about the Springville Irrigation Company. I'm not sure who put this on, I always like to, okay, Commissioner Lee, you'd like to introduce, and perhaps if you can provide any
Yes.
presenters of the timing or anything that you'd like us to follow.
So, and I believe, I believe the two presenters are here, is Ross here? Okay. And so, the, there's an old saying, I don't know if I'll go with the old saying, let's just say that water's, water's for fight, and it seems like so. There's always a concern about water, and, and just a side note that, it's not a side note, it's a serious note. We're in one of the, one of the worst droughts that we have had in a long time, and, and with the snowpack that we're seeing, who knows what it's gonna look like into the future. But with, with water, there's always some concern. I noticed that the other day, there was, there was some thoughts on Central Utah Water Project and that federal project, federal meaning that, how we bring water basically from clear across the state over here to the, to the Wasatch Front, which is, which was a very important project that happened in our, in our state. Because I wonder if we would have never done that, where we'd be right now with some of the water concerns that are going on. But nevertheless, there, there has, there has for a long time been concerns about water, water rights, and some disputes. The reason why I asked this group to come and present is because there's, there's been litigation going on. This is not to solve that problem, and I, and I think they both know that. This is not a, this is not a policy meeting or anything of that nature. We're not trying to get into any, any legal, legal ease with this. This is basically just to ask, to give us an opportunity as Commissioners to ask some questions about water and what's, what's happening specifically in the Hobble Creek area, and, and maybe into the future as we have as we have a better understanding that as a county with our planning commission and others, um, we can understand more of our role or where not to be in and, in, in, involved. And so that's, that's why I asked this, this group to come, to come up here and, and correct me if I'm wrong. Albert, you're with the Springville Irrigation? And, and Ross, you're with the Department of Natural Resources, Division of Water Rights? Correct? Okay. So those, those are the two individuals. I, I do have, if I could maybe start off with a, a couple of questions so that when you're talking to us, you can help us understand, or at least myself, understand. The first one is, is that there's, there's some confusion. It's maybe just on my part, but I'd like to know who makes the decision when it comes to new connections for water, you know, with, with water rights, because I understand that there's a Department of Environmental Quality, which goes, you know, with the division of drinking water and then, and Ross, your department. And so there's a little bit of confusion, at least on my part, on who makes the decision for new connections for water. And the second que- question I would have is, who makes the decisions for the changing of surface water rights, you know, to under, underground water rights? Um, I'd like to know who, who does that. And then as, as I see this, this distribution list that was, that's been published, it's Hubble Creek's distribution list by priority of schedule. And there's, there's been some talk and, uh, that eighteen eighty-seven is a pretty critical time in which we're, we're saying from here, um, you know, for the more, more recent. And, uh, how are we, how are we implementing that? How are we doing that? And what does that look like? If that's the case, and maybe you could clarify some, some thinking on, uh, what that is too. If, if both of you'd like to come up or come up separately, I don't know if you've talked and kind of arranged what you'd like to do there. Make sure and come up, Albert. Just, just tell us your name and who you're with and then, then we can, we can start from there.
You're gonna have to bear with me, 'cause I left my glasses home and I have a hard time in a hurry to get here. My name is Albert Harmer. I'm with the Springville Irrigation Company and the Springville Irrigation District. Okay, on the thing. Now, you probably have a question what that is. Springville Irrigation Company manages the water in the Springville area and up the Left Hand Fork of Hubble Creek. The district is the one that has the right for the strawberry proportion of it that we use in that area on the thing. And it incorporates up the Left Hand Fork of Hubble Creek and such. Okay, so now you kinda got an idea what's taking place here. In the nineteen seventies was it, Ross, that seventy started, they wanted to adjudicate up the canyon on it and the state come down and, and they gave water rights out to a lot of individuals up the canyon that had no right to it. And they, as the irrigation company and involved with Springville Irrigation Company and Springville, I'm, excuse me, Mapleton's Irrigation Company, we protested a lot of these rights. And I'll just draw this little map for you. You can see one part of the canyon, this is the protested rights up there.
You'll, you'll have to speak into the microphone so that they can hear you.
Oh, yeah, huh?
Yep.
Okay, anyway, these are the protested rights that are up the canyons on both sides here you'll see on it. This is the bottom portion of the canyon, and if you go up the canyon, you'll see more protests that go up the canyon. So, since the seventies and the eighties and that, we've been under these protests, under these protests, we've been filing all these protests on it. And the state's finally come and set us a special prosecutor ahead or a person to kinda resolve all these problems. And it just didn't happen up Hubble Creek Canyon. It happened all the way along the Wasatch Front. So the state puts the money forward to have a, a person to probably start handling this. And so we've been under these protests since the eighties and it's finally getting down to being resolved. And as an irrigation company, we spent a lot of money trying to get all these resolved so that we have, so it's a right, water right, what I'm trying to tell you. Okay. So anyway, and I don't know if all of you's got a list, if you need any more of these, I've got them here. And what's happened now, what they wanna do, the state and along with irrigation companies and everybody else.
You talking about this list?
Yes. I have more of these if anybody would like some of them. And so what they wanna do is what they call, uh, priority date. Okay. Now, the irrigation companies, Springville Irrigation, the lower peep of the valley, have an eighteen fifty-one right, and then all these other people scattered up through the canyon up there, their rights go clear up to eighteen ninety, ninety-two, nineteen, eighteen ninety-two and so forth. So the states come up with this and they wanna start this, this spring and appropriate the water like it's supposed to be. Okay. So what'll happen on this, when we approximately, now it hasn't been said exactly, when we don't have ninety-nine second feet to supply the bottom proportion of, of the eighteen fifty-one right, then these people up the canyon will s- be taking off what they claim they have a water right on, all these other people up the canyon. And that usually happens the best years, if we have good years, we might make it into the end of June before we lose that ninety-nine second feet. Sometime now like this year, it'll start day one when we start to irrigate. So them people up the canyon, which be May somewhere, they'll be cut off of, right off the bat, no water supply. Now...
So Albert, I, I'm sorry, can I, can I ask you a question?
You bet.
So when you say eighteen fifty-one, that means there's, on this priority list you're talking about, there's only five entities?
That's right. The eighteen fifty-one right is the prime right, and that would be Maple and Irrigation Company, Springville City, uh, would be basically, um, Springville Irrigation Company and so on and so forth on it. And there's a few others there that are the eighteen fifty-one rights. And the rest of them people down the line would be cut off on the thing. And I think this is gonna be a good way to resolve all the problems up the canyon on it. Uh, we spent a lot of money trying to do it with attorney fees and such and so forth, and I think it's a good idea to get it rolling and get it started on it. Now, Ross Hansen down here is the regional engineer for the state. Okay? And he's, I'm gonna turn a little time over to him so he can explain a little bit better. He's more knowledgeable than I am on it, but he'll explain it a little bit better to you. And then if there's any questions, we wanna be informative back and forth. Now, the reason why I wanna be here today, I wanna, so you people will be informed over here that these rights and these people up there that's up Left Hand Fork of Hubble Creek are building homes and everything else with no water right on the thing. And so, and then we want more homes and more homes up there, and they're just not the water up the canyon. So that's why I'm just trying to be to you, this is just an informative right, to inform you people, excuse me a minute while I get rid of this noisy box, and to get rid of all that that's going on up the canyon on it. So Ross? I'll turn the time over to you, okay?
Stay right here, Albert. So, my name is Ross Hansen. Um, as, as Albert said, I'm, I'm the regional engineer over the Utah Lake and Jordan River Drainage Basin for the State Engineers Office. I'm not here to advocate for Albert. I'm not here to advocate for anybody. I'm here, I, I was actually coming here under the understanding I was coming to answer questions the best I could. So, um, what I can do is try and, uh, clear up some of the things Albert said and maybe help understand some of the things that we're doing right now to try and resolve the issues that are going, going on up in Hubble Creek. So what we're doing, yeah, well, Albert alluded to the concept of a lot of lawsuits going on up there. The state engineer in the seventies established what's called a proposed determination of the water rights. There were a lot of people that submitted water user claims and the proposed determination compiled those water users' claims. And the state engineer then put that forward for the judge to decree. Before it was decreed by a judge, objections arose. Albert referred to those as, as, uh, what'd you call them?
Protest.
Um, objections arose mainly by Springville Irrigation Company stating, hey, these rights are wrong and they should not be decreed in the Hubble Creek Drainage. The, the legal litigation over those objected rights has been going on ever since the seventies. So the state engineer, in an attempt to help solve this problem that is not ending anytime soon, we have found that the best thing we can do to help in this situation to resolve these objections is to establish what's called a distribution system. And, and Albert alluded to that as well. So what we're, what we're doing is on January twentieth, we've already held the, the initial public meeting to establish this distribution system. So it's gonna be called the Hubble Creek Distribution System. And on January twentieth, we have set up a meeting where we will establish a committee. That committee then, once it's established, will appoint a, um, river commissioner for the Hubble Creek Commission. Now, the idea here is that once we establish this distribution system, there will be a commissioner then that will shut people off from using water based on their priority of their water rights. And that's the list that Albert has given you guys, is that list of priorities of water rights that exist. Now, if there's anything I would like to convey to you is that we are going to be, uh, administering or distributing water in the Hubble Creek area, both surface and underground water rights based on that priority list that you're looking at. And that's important. Now, Albert talked about this just a little bit, but, and we, no one knows what the water year is going to provide, but it is important that everybody understand that we don't, as, as, we're not directed, the State Engineers Office is not directed to give credence to a particular use of water. We don't say, oh, this person has a water right that's, uh, brand-new water right, say two thousand and twenty, just for exaggeration purposes, and it's, he's, this person's using that water in their home. So this guy over here has a water right for irrigation and it has a priority date of eighteen fifty-one. This guy with the, with the home is more important, so he can have his water because he's gotta, he's gotta flush his toilets and he's gotta shower and drink water, whereas the agriculture user might be able to shut off. That is not how the statute directs us to operate. We direct, or we operate on the basis of priority and that's it. So if you've got a two, two thousand and twenty priority date water right and the wa- the water in the creek drops to a certain level, you're going to get shut off. And so that's important to understand. So...
So can I ask you a question on that?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
And, and this is, this is good for us to know because we have had a lot of the conversation on what the enforcement mechanism was gonna look like. It was always fearful that it was gonna drop back to us somehow on that, and that's the reason why it made us really nervous. But what, what I'm hearing you saying is, is that you're gonna, you're gonna have a commissioner, this river commissioner, who is gonna be the enforcement officer or commissioner for this, this project?
Hundred percent. That's correct. That is what we're trying to establish as we speak.
Okay.
Our plan is to get this commissioner in place for this irrigation season coming up. Um, there's a lot of work that still has to be done, uh, an establishment of a committee, an establishment, uh, these guys need to hire a commissioner. They need to figure out how much they're going to pay this person, so forth and so on. So there's a lot of work that has to be done. That person will then, in her, in, in, in an easier system, this one is extremely complicated, in an easier system, the commissioner's walking up and down the river, telling people to close their gates if their priority date has been exceeded. Now, one other thing that I would throw out that I think is important for the commission to consider is that, as, as Albert alluded to, what is it, ninety-nine CFS on those eighteen fifty-one rights? Some years, and Albert said most likely this year, and he's the most knowledgeable about the physical water in the canyon, most likely this year, um, all of the rights beyond the eighteen fifty-one rights are most likely gonna get cut off from the get-go.
You're talking about surface?
I'm talking all water.
Oh.
Surface and underground.
That's gonna be a problem.
It is a problem. And that, I think, is why Albert wanted me here.
Because if I look at this list, I mean, we've got homes, we've got, you know, ranches...
So let me, that was my, that was my best attempt at trying to drive a point home, but let me tell you what the state engineer's going to do.
Okay.
Okay? We understand this is a problem, just like you just understood as well. Um, so we are giving, we're not going to come in hard and shut homes off this year. We understand that this situation has got very convoluted and very problematic up there. We are going to be asking people that they, over the course of the next year, that they get their water rights in order so that they don't get shut off the next year if they're drawing from the underground. Okay, so, because there's homes and there's developments up there using water. And certainly, we can't come in there on, on April fifteenth and tell people, there's no water in the creek, you're shut off. They've gotta have some time to adjust to this. And so we're proposing one year for that to happen.
So what you're saying though is that even though we're not, is it ninety-two or ninety-nine feet per second in the river that you wanted?
Well, this is still a little bit over ninety-nine second feet.
Ninety-nine second feet?
At our upper band, if it's not there, then they're cut off.
So what you're saying this year though is that even though we might be below the ninety-nine second feet in the way of what, what the measurement is for the cutoff, there's gonna be some leniency on that?
We have to. There's just no way that this can happen. It, we would have chaos if we went up there and shut people off by priority this year. Um, so we're, we're trying to open the door for people to say, hey, there is a major problem here and we need to get our water rights straightened out. Um, yeah, I'll stop right there and if you have any other questions, let me have you ask them.
Um, so, walk through for me then, when you say that they need to get their water, water rights in order, because for me, I mean, I, the, the, the water basket either fills or it doesn't fill, and there's, you know, there's priority to it. And for me, do we, the question always comes back, do we have enough water? And it can be yes and no. It can be yes in some years and no in others. And I get that. But you can't build a home up there or live up there with a yes or no every year. So how does somebody live up there and get their water rights in order?
Very good question. Perfect question, as a matter of fact. So let me, let me, uh, let me read this to you if I could. Now, remember that I, that we were gonna go a year here and let everybody try and get in line with these things, but I'll read it to you, 'cause I, it's, it's better said than I'm gonna be able to restate it. So, "The state engineer will administer underground sources in the canyon above city ditch slash Mapleton Canal Diversion Dam conjunctively with surface water. Conjunctive management of groundwater means that water rights are distributed by priority and the surface and underground system in the canyon is all distributed as one source. As an alternative to the, to distributing groundwater rights by priority along with surface rights, the state engineer will consider the following three things." Okay? So, and you're gonna have more questions, but let me read them to you. A, voluntary arrangements, provided the arrangement is approved in writing by affected parties and the state engineer. I'll expound on that. Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Um, so someone could make an agreement with all of the users that will be affected to be able to use the water out of priority. Now, that has happened. Uh, we've got a situation where that has happened, where they've, actually, it was not easy, but they, they, they arranged a stipulated agreement where they could actually use water out of priority. These gentlemen have the best priority right in the canyon, and so they're the ones that are gonna have to make that agreement. Now, there's some caveats to that. There's other people that probably should have been involved with that agreement, and, and so they're very complicated to get, to arrive at. So, but it is possible that people could, the users of a system could agree to allow somebody to use their water out of priority. So that is a possibility.
So can I, can I run that through?
Yes, please.
My mind?
Yes, please.
So is it possible then that somebody who owns a lot up there, um, who purchased the lot with a water right, you know, to that, that lot as well, but has not been using it, but then wants to build, um, you know, on that lot? And in my mind, I think what you're saying is, is that they're, they're gonna be out of order in the sense of this priority, but they negotiate with somebody else who has an earlier priority, you know, and has that water to then go ahead and build? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, um, you, you got it kind of, for the most part, you got it. So I'm gonna just cl- thank you for asking clarifying questions, 'cause we're gonna get to the bottom of this. So, so somebody, so, so I think you just hit two different things. The concept of the entire system agreeing to let somebody use water out of priority is, is an agreement... The concept of the entire system agreeing to let somebody use water out of priority is is an agreement that's. That's made and signed by everybody that's affected. And that could be a lot of people. So that's one thing, and then what I think you asked is the, well, the second part of what I think you put together there was the concept of somebody going and arranging to purchase. A better priority water right and use that right in their home instead of the low pri- the the bad priority water right. So I think you might have hit those two concepts there, so there's two things going on.
Right?
Another question, should I go to?
Oh.
Number two. Okay, so so a second, shall I say, way to go around the priority system? Is they could possibly arrange to for a mitigation of impacts of groundwater use. Through a replacement plan approved pursuant to Utah Code Section seventy three, three twenty and twenty three. So, now you gotta be going, what's that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Albert might even be going, what's that, but uh. A situation could exist where a user in a particular geographic location in Hubble Creek. Could arrange to purchase water from, say, Strawberry Reservoir. And they could. They could have Strawberry Reservoir water. Um, delivered. To the, what's it called, Albert, what's where's where can strawberry water be delivered to on the creek, what's that? Diversion called? Okay, so they, so I'll say it in layman's terms. They can have water bought and distrib- and and brought down from Strawberry and put into Hubble Creek at the bottom of the creek. So if you can envision with me, there could be somebody. That could arrange to have that water bought and brought down to the bottom of Hubble Creek. And then have a well up Hubble Creek somewhere. Where they would then take. The unit of water is usually acre foot. They would take an acre foot of water out of the well, and in a perfect world. They would deliver an acre foot of water out of Strawberry at the bottom of the canyon to make up for it. Now, that gets real complicated and convoluted because. Um, it it's it may be that that person that takes that acre foot of water out of the well. There's not enough water in the creek to satisfy the prior water rights between where he's taking water out of the well. And where the strawberry water gets put into the system. So that's it, there's a law to that, it's not.
I think I understand it, let me let me reiterate it, see if. So in in essence, because of the ninety nine second feet that's gonna be going into Utah Lake, that that's the the issue. What you're doing is is you're you're putting it still into Utah Lake, but you're just you're just doing it through another source. Well, I guess the complication, though, is is that if you have enough water up there during maybe a dry year or whatever to satisfy the others, I mean, that's probably the where the rub comes in.
Yeah, you're you you got it, but I would say it's even a little different than what you just said, you said get it into Utah Lake, that's not really the goal. The goal isn't to get the water Utah Lake, the goal is to satisfy all those prior water rights on that priority schedule.
But you'll never be able to do that with strawberry water, cause this doesn't, it's not gonna come over, it goes around and down.
No, you can bring strawberry water to Hubble Creek, is that what?
The upper part of Hubble, oh, the lower part?
Yes, the lower part.
The lower part, okay.
Go ahead.
There is already some of that that early our forefathers. The people up there, up the canyon that have a prime right, have an irrigation right through the Springville Irrigation Company. They bought strawberry, this is a long time ago, this is the twenty eights and so on, they bought strawberry. To make so they had a first class right, as we call it. And that was an exchange basis, so what happened? The water was brought in on the lower part, and then with the lower part had that water from Strawberry. But it was an exchange basis for up the canyon, but we have a problem now. The Hubble Creek is overjudicated with water, okay, so it's pretty hard to for me to say. Yes, you can bring strawberry water in and put it up the canyon. Now, I'm not saying it can't be done, but that is what happened to our forefathers a long time ago, they did do that, okay? Get on an exchange basis up there.
Okay.
So so it can happen, water can be delivered to Strawberry, um, I think what you just heard Albert say is if somebody does try and put an exchange. Application into our office to pull water out of a well up the canyon and replace it with strawberry water down low. Uh, there would have to be some very perfect circumstances for that to work, I think is what Albert's telling you, and 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 we understand that as well. Okay, um, the last one, uh, that I wanna read to you. Is, and and again, I'm gonna say this in a very strange way, but a way that somebody could maybe. A a technique somebody could utilize to uh not get cut off by priority, how's that for, that's probably the best way to say that. Uh, would be a reduction in the total allowed diversion depletion or beneficial uses in an approved change application for surface to underground changes. And I'll explain that.
Did a lawyer write that one up?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think some attorneys were involved in this. You get attorneys and engineers together and it's not a good combination, I'll tell you. Um, so, so what that is, and I'm, most people that have ever dealt with water have heard the word haircut. And and haircut gets thrown around. Way too loosely in the water world, it it's very not understood thing, it's not an understood concept, so. What what that would consist of is if somebody has a surface water right. And we all know that you don't take water out of a surface and put it in a home and drink it anymore in this day and age, right? So they would usually wanna take that surface water right, stop using it from the surface and drill a well and pull it from the underground. Um, what this is stating is if somebody wants to do that. We could. They could, they could provide data to us showing when that water was available. Year over year over year, come up with an average of when that water was not available to them in their surface source. And we're stating that we can and have all over the state, we can say, look, we'll let you. And and I'll put it in numbers, that'll help, but we'll let you take that surface water right with a haircut and draw a lesser amount of water. With surety and security, we'll let you draw that from the underground. So, just a just a rough, rough example off the top of my head here. Say somebody's got a a water right for four acre feet of water. And it coming out of one of the tributaries, out of the surface source, and they say, you know what, we're gonna build a couple homes or two, three, four homes here, we're going to. We wanna put a change application into the state engineer's office to move from the surface to a well. Well, we'd go in and we'd look at that, and they would try to provide data to help us understand that, and we would say, okay, when is there not water available in that creek? For them to take, whether it be by priority? Or by physical water in that creek? Just to put a number on it, let's say that it is June first, when they're out of water in that tributary. So. I I'm trying to get to a halfway number, what's a halfway number in in between the start of an irrigation season and and the end of the irrigation, but let's just say June first is halfway, just for ease of. We would then in that case, we would say, look. You are only typically able to get two acre feet, not four, from that surface source. We're gonna cut this water right back to two, and we're gonna leave you alone. We're not going to come in and tell you to shut off that well by priority. So once they take a substantial haircut, it is possible to not be bothered by that priority system. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so I hope that answered a couple of your questions at the first, you asked, who who do they go to to see who they can get a well from, that's us, that that they come to us. And how does water go from surface to underground, well, it would go by a haircut, now. Just to expound just a one step further, because it is, there's so many problems up there, there are many people that have changed their water right. To underground ser- sources, and they did not get a haircut.
Hmm.
Um, so. If you're if you're keeping up with all this. If that person doesn't have a haircut, they have to be bothered by the priority system. So they'd have to get cut off by their priority date, if they've got an eighteen eighty right. And we're cut back to eighteen fifty one. And they're putting that water in their homes, we would have to cut them off.
Right.
So, there's gonna have to be, so those three things are going to have to come into play over this next year. For these guys to be able to not be bothered and be cut off by this new commissioner that will be installed. Uh, this this year, and be able to continue to divert water into their home.
Okay.
That making sense?
Yeah, so, um. The the question, the, I mean, with all this going on, I mean, it 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 seems pretty obvious that there's just not enough water up there. And and there's probably more rights or even paper rights. Uh, you know, of water than there are actual physical water.
Absolutely.
Up there, and so that's why this attempt is to prioritize on a on a distribution basis. Which ha- who has the right first to go down through this process and get to where. Um, where it makes sense for those who have those rights and had them had them first.
That's correct.
So, um, Bryce, do you have, Bryce, do you have any any other questions with our our planning department, and so I I just. I just wanna make sure that you had an opportunity, cause I know we had some conversation, but.
Uh, Bryce Armstrong Community Development Staff, yeah, a lot to unpack here, a lot of concerns from a permitting. Uh, aspect for for our office, our office handles the the permitting up in that area, um, so I I appreciate these gentlemen coming and kind of explaining, we've heard some. Uh, references to to this situation recently, and and so I guess a couple of questions or or maybe comments, you can uh feel free to to add your input to these. Um. I have, I understand there's gonna be a process where there's gonna be a a a water commissioner uh established, and and there's gonna be this prior to prioritization. Process, is that gonna be clearly documented so that we have, or what's the documentation process so that? We know where these priorities lie with with which source, you know, we have a situation where we've got, um. Dozens and dozens, almost hundreds of lots up there that are are built on with with a home, which are. Have been approved for a home, have not been built on, um, that utilize. A a central water system that probably utilizes one right, and others have wells for their their water right, and so. You know, what's our expectation from a permitting stance of, we've got someone coming in for a a new permit? Um, you know, how do we interpret what that priority is and and kind of what our expectation is? We have also people that are, you know, always asking, not necessarily in this or in this area, but all over the county about potential development applications. And, you know, we have a process that they have to give us documentation that they have the adequate water rights, and so. Um, we just wanna know how to uh make sure that we're referring to the the most up to date documentation of this. Process that's specific to the Hubble Creek Canyon.
Okay. So first and foremost, um. I'm I'm a phone call away at any time if you need me, so. Um, and you're welcome to call me so we can talk through anything, we'll we'll figure it out if we put our heads together, so. Um, first and foremost, the response, the automatic response to that type of a question is priority date. Um, that priority schedule will be put out and everybody's going to have it, everybody's going to know, and the commissioner's gonna be going up and down that creek, shutting water off based on those priorities. The next, the best answer I can give to what I think your biggest concern is. Is how do you, I think what you're asking me is how do I know whether or not a water right, whether I can approve a development or grant, grant. Give my blessing, if you will, to a development based on a water right that's been put in front of me. And my response to that would be. Look at the approved change application, these these guys would have to. File a change application and go through that haircut process for you to, as an administrator, to ultimately know what it is they have. So the way I see things, if somebody walks into your office and has a. Water right and it it's a nineteen thirty two water right, which is terrible priority, just for reference. Um, a a nineteen thirty two water right and says, hey, I wanna build a home, I wanna build a subdivision with this water right. Um, my response to them, if I were in your shoes, would be file a change application and let's see what that water right's worth from the underground. And once we see that change application approved and what how how it took a haircut, then we can base our decision on that. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, I mean, we we review change applications all the time, you know, out in the valley, and so we're familiar with that process, I just, you know. Most of the the permits we'll get for are for lots that are existing, we have, you know, dozens of lots that have been through a process. They're all utilizing a a central water system that is referred to a a a singular or multiple rights. We're not getting those rights at that point, we're just saying, hey, this is our, this is the water system or the water company that we're using, and so can we equate? Where that water company is in relation to the the priority status and. That makes sense?
I think I think I'm following, I may not be, but I think it comes still back to the question or the answer that I'm I'm giving, which is. If if you've got a water system, they may have physical water, they may have a. Ten million gallon tank, and they may have the greatest flowing well on the planet. But if they don't have the water rights. With the correct priority dates and or gone through one of those three scenarios that I threw out. They're not gonna be able to take water. They're not gonna be able to divert water, no matter how good their well is, no matter how good their system is, they're not gonna be able to take water. And so that's why I'm coming, keep coming back to this concept of. If somebody's coming to you and saying, I want to build a subdivision with a hundred homes in it. My response to them would be, show me the approved change application that allows water to go into those hundred homes, and how much water is was approved by the state engineer. That won't get cut off.
So those change applications will be cleared.
Oh, yes.
Stating stating uh that they're, you know, have have completed this process and.
Correct.
And that they'll be cleared off, and we we can, we can talk offline too.
So there there's a question, oh, it wa- it was online. Um, basically, when I read it, it was saying that, um, if. If somebody owns two acre feet in Springville Irrigation, do they, how do they know, are they automatically in the eighteen fifty one, cause? Springville Irrigation, I see some in eighteen fifty two and some in eighteen fifty three, so how would, how would, oh, here it is. Cause I am basically just wondering if someone owns two two shares of Springville Irrigation Company, do they fall under the eighteen fifty one automatically? Even if they purchased it in twenty twenty?
Okay, yeah, um, lots of, a common point of confusion in the water rights world is confusing the. Concept of a water right and a water share, they're two different things. Um, Springville Irrigation Company holds the water rights and they've got good priority dates on those water rights, they have a. Portfolio, if you will, of water rights. And then they issue shares to their shareholders based on using water, using their water right, so. It does not matter when that person acquired that share of stock, it's still. Riding on the priority of the portfolio of rights that Springville Irrigation Company has. So hopefully that made sense.
That that does, that makes sense, hopefully it made sense to whoever asked that question. Um, any any other questions? Oh, come on up.
I'm glad Richard is here.
Sorry, let me, let me.
Oh, sorry.
A lot more buzz than I do.
I know, I know. Well, Richard will tell you, I've, just in Spanish Fork in the county, I've been dealing here as an investor. Um, for over forty years and in developing. And my concern in, and I own water shares. And we have some water rights both in Salt Lake County and Utah County. And I helped start some large uh development companies, the. Greatest one, which I'm proud of, is Gordy Jones and Edge Homes. And we also have our own development company that I do with investors who are mostly practicing physicians. Who are elderly like me now in their late sixties and early seventies. And so the question of it is, when I go in and and ask for. Uh, development and I go to the city, which in this case, let's just use Spanish Fork City, cause it was very good, and. I had two sources of water that I went and purchased, and I purchased a block of water from current people who owned water. Or in some cases, the city where we actually exchanged some strawberry water with the Westfield Water. And stuff companies that we did in a couple of different things. And so when I get a development, but I'm now Vic. And so when I get a development, but I'm now Vic homebuyer and I've already bought my home in Springville and my question to Springville and, and up Mapleton Canyon and everything else, if I have a current home that I received a building permit, no matter what the laws are, they've allowed me to go and buy my home, build my home, use my home, and I have water right usage that could be argued at the state level. And I'm happy to document that to the commission. My issue is, how do we dictate to those who are upstream that may not have big water rights or only user water rights or groundwater rights, whatever, and that are currently living there? I'm not talking about those who already own shares and that may have a development later on that want ten homes or twenty homes and twenty acres or whatever the density is. How do we protect them? My question here is, I think that you need to seriously consider both, both these gentlemen and you as a commission that it's kind of like where we were last year. Shouldn't we have all been in this together if we had a bad problem? And people are diminished at a percentage ratio and not totally cut off? That doesn't make any sense to me. I gotta just tell you, if I was up there and I had water shares and I had built myself and acquired some wealth and I had built property up there and everything else and I had fifty homes I built, all of a sudden, somebody tells me, well, your home doesn't go to this and we did this share and we did that share. Well, this really puts a big case against potentially Springville, whether they like it or not. And, you know, any of the other users or whatever that they pass those shares down over a generation or a hundred and fifty years. I have followed this very closely. My great-great-grandfather was Sterling Hanks. He was a surveyor and water master and came, came with the, excuse me. Came with the Vanguard Company and then later came with the Brigham Young Company that came in eighteen forty-eight where there was twelve hundred people. He asked him to go back for one purpose. He had staked out the trails, just in case they had problems. Thank you very much. In case they had problems, he had staked out the trail for the company, you know, with Brigham Young and there was ten people who were in charge of that and he was their master. They sent him back again and so in June of nineteen forty-eight, when they came back here in September, he was the master for twelve hundred and twenty people to make sure that they were protected and that their direction and everything was correct. Not all of these trails were as definitive as people think. And so because of that, he also became a water master from Salt Lake City down to Saint George. And he did a lot of the surveying. Richard will tell you that Hank's photography and old photos that we have dating back to eighteen fifty-six for the founding of Spanish Fork and South County and North County, was a lot of that was done with my great-great-grandfather. And uh the avenging angel would be assigned to protect him, so, at Porter Rockwell. And so I'm very concerned always about water rights because I've done three big subdivisions over the years. I'm now seventy-two in Salt Lake and have been involved in this valley for forty-plus years. And I love working with the cities. They've been great. But this is a very delicate issue that I think you need to take a little time to find out about and not make a decision in this meeting. That's all I'm consulting to.
Yeah, we're not making any, any decisions. Um, I, I, so the question, I think Vic is, wh- what do we do, right? What do we do with, with existing or with those who have purchased properties and?
Well, there's always been, I, I have water shares. I have some five, five acre, you know, again, you know, flow value and things that we have purchased from other water users who then went into dry farming or went into developing. And they assigned the city X amount of shares and there were shares left over. There are some properties that have two type of shares with them, you know, and two different companies that may be providing them water. And so I think you really, instead of just talking about dates, we can argue about dates all you want, but man, when you've given a man your word and you've given him a building license, excuse me, the building. I'm getting old. You've assigned them a building permit, you have a responsibility that you shouldn't give that building permit to him and power and utilities and anything else and to make sure that they're delivered there and it's fair and it's equitable. And so you're down, if, if I'm a, I have a farm, okay? I have three farms. And if I have a farm, I'm willing to go more into a dry creek crop type situation where I would maybe change my hay, my alfalfa. I might do pumpkins that don't take as long and as much water and stuff. There's a lot of things I can do. I know three or four of the big users out there and I'm sure some of them are gonna be affected this because their property's in Springville and they have massive land you can see right off the freeway and they've been good friends. And uh I think that you gotta really consider that you can't tell me, cause what I heard here, which concerns me, is that there are people that are existing in their homes up there that have home permits, maybe some of them even from the county and then from Springville City, that may have their water shut off. I find that, you know, atrocious, you know, from my perspective. If I owned that home and I had two hundred thousand dollar home or five hundred thousand, doesn't matter, it's perspective of what I have in my life. Okay? So that's all I'm talking about. We gotta talk a little bit about equity and I'm happy to bring some other people into this thing. Happy to meet with both these gentlemen and have them come to the meeting, especially Springville. Because I think Richard tell you, you know, if, I've had a pretty good relationship over the years, but I've always had a few battles. But uh, but I'm equitable. I traded the, the city, one of the largest pieces that we traded in the last twenty years. And so from upper Spanish Fork to down into the area so they could build their new judiciary hall and everything else and have expansion future for some of their additional, you know, administrative buildings and police. So, anyway, I'm, I'm just saying, please be cautious. Take a look at current people who are already using the water and take a look at the, cause everybody that I have, I don't always use all ten acres or twenty acre feet of my water when I'm irrigating. I don't. But if I, if somebody came to me and said, I can only give you seven and a half instead of your ten because I've got other users, even though it's a right. The right is in the fact that as a city, I better go and get these people all together and we better, you know, make it so that they're protected too. Everybody has a right to be protected. If I've been given a building permit and I'm living there especially, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to say something about that, what you're talking about. Okay, first he was talking about shares, okay? He had shares in different companies. As Springville Irrigation Company, that's why we've been fighting those up there to protect the people that have shares in our company, up the canyon and down in the lower part of the valley on it. Them people have a prime right, okay? The other people did not have a prime right and this is the way it's being solved. All we've been doing with the irrigation company is spending a lot of money trying to protect those people that have shares in the company so they have a water right. And just like you said, some years we can't supply our duty of four. Sometimes we have to go to a duty of three. I don't know if you know what that means. That means four acres per share or three acres per share, whatever. But the duty of four is what Springville has. And so what I'm saying is, some years we can't do it because of drought. But what we've been doing is trying to protect those people that have prime water rights in our company up the left-hand fork of Hobble Creek and down also in the valley on it, okay? Do you understand that?
Oh, I have no problem with that. I just, you should not have been, there should not be a building permit issue.
That's, that's.
That's why we're over here trying to inform the county about what's taking place up the canyon, okay?
Yeah, okay. Any other comments? I guess, or online? Well, thank you. Thanks for coming. I, I know that this is a, a long road. Um, and there's a lot longer road still, you know, to go. And there's, there's gonna be uh, um, a lot to look at, a lot to do and, and I'm sure that it's um, it's one that's gonna have to take some more conversation and some more work, for sure. And this, and so thank you for coming. This is just a work session. Of course, there's no, there's no vote or anything. It was, it was supposed to be for information cause we'll never be able to make decisions or correct decisions if we don't have at least the best information that we can get. So thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for asking, okay?
Commissioner Ainge?
Have we moved into closed? We need to do that?
Yep.
We'll now move into our move, uh meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we having a public comment?
Oh, um, our, well, public comment.
You're right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have just general public comment.
So I have something that I'm gonna bring up in general public comments because I didn't, it came up this morning, so I didn't have time to put it on the agenda, but I want to discuss it. Um, the treasury, under the new COVID relief act, the treasury is offering rental assistance money to local governments. Um, there's only five local governments in the state of Utah that qualify for that. That's Salt Lake County, Utah County, Weaver County, Davis County, and Salt Lake City. So, we do qualify for this. Right now, we don't have the formula to know how much we qualify for. It's between twenty million and forty million. I know that's a huge swing. I'm not sure how much. Um, but uh we, we found out in the last forty-eight hours that um we do qualify for this money. We have to apply for it. We have to apply by January twelfth. So that happens before the next commission meeting. So what we'll do, if, I wanna discuss it now and then if we have an agreement for it, we'll do this with the ratification process and we'll have you sign an application prior to applying. So, here's kind of the skinny that I've been able to figure out in the last eight hours. We qualify for this. We qualify for between twenty and forty million dollars. The money would be used for rental assistance or um utility bills for people that have suffered under COVID. There's very specific requirements. For example, the household income cannot be above eighty percent of median income. So we would look at our county's median income and if anyone who makes more than eighty percent of the county's median income does not, does not qualify, anyone who makes less than that could qualify. It can be used for rent, um mortgage, I believe, and utilities. Uh, there has to be specific requirements as far as we have to gather this information. And then we would actually pay or the payment would go directly to the utility company or the landlord. So it would go directly. Now, the logistics of a program like this, uh the administrative burden is incredibly high. However, I've already talked to the Mountain Land Association of Governments. I've talked to Andrew at MAG. MAG already has to gather this information when they are coordinating their heat program. So I'm, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the heat program, but it's similar where you have to verify household income. They're looking at these factors anyway. They already have these systems set up. So I talked to Andrew and said, if we were to get this money, if we were to request it and get approved and get this money, would MAG be willing to work with us like they did for the small business grants and the nonprofit grants and administer this? Um, the, the grant does allow for a small portion of the grant to be utilized for administrative burden.
Is there a percentage? Was there a percentage for that administrative?
Yeah, ten percent. They said up to ten percent. And I don't, I can't imagine it would take that much.
No.
So it's, it's significant. It'd be between two and four million dollars. MAG could do it for a, probably a tenth of that. I mean, they could really do it for, like literally like a tenth of that because they already have those programs. They already have a system in place. They already have programs in place that do income verification, that do unemployment verification. Um, so I talked to him about that. They also, their heat program pays utility companies directly already. So they already have a system in place for that. I asked him if they would be willing to partner with us on the implementation of this and then we would serve as the auditors of that and we would also ensure the reporting of these reports back to the federal government. So our COVID team, Christie, Christie and Peter could oversee it, audit it, and help make sure we have the reports. And we already have those folks on staff. MAG said that they would be willing to utilize their existing network and then track their administrative costs and we could work with that. Um, so I think logistically, we can make this work. Um, and I think it would be a huge help to the people of this county. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Do you have any questions? Do you have any concerns? Um, if after this discussion, we think that at least two of the three commissioners will agree, then I will move forward with the ratification process so that we can get this application filed by the twelfth.
Well, I, I mean, we can't make decisions in.
Obviously, but I wanna discuss it.
Yeah. Um, I have received some emails regarding this, um, in the administration of it. I think that, I, I mean, I would like to explore it. I think that, why not? We need to explore it. I mean, there's, there's, there's a need there personally.
Right.
Knowing that we can't um make a decision on it, it's probably something that we'd do.
Right.
Maybe offline, but still, um.
But I wanted to bring it up in the public forum and at least discuss it here.
Yeah.
And then we can take it offline after that.
Maybe we can follow up as, as Bill says, offline, but we can follow up on what's required so we can then ratify, get this going.
Right, so, um, and I've got no problem with that. But I just thought I would mention that we are, we are one of five agencies that are eligible. And the administrative burden at first was looking like it was way too high, but when I called MAG and they said they would be willing to partner with us, I think that's something we can handle at that point, so.
And that was ten percent for administrative costs?
Up to ten percent.
Up to.
Mm-hmm. And.
That's enormous.
That's huge. I don't think we would need that much. Now, if we had to, if we had to like hire a third-party agency, if we had to get new software, I mean, I could see it costing a lot, but being able to partner with MAG, I think it would literally be one-tenth of that. Um, maybe, maybe one-eighth.
Yeah, we may have the infrastructure to support this quickly.
If we don't have the infrastructure now, so I could see that being a lot, but with them having the infrastructure and being willing to learn. Not only that, I like the synergy. Um, if someone is, if someone hears about our COVID relief um rental assistance program and they go to MAG to apply for it, MAG can also tell them if they qualify for heat assistance as well. So we're putting people in an area where they can get multiple resources for the help they need to prevent people from having housing insecurity. I, I feel like there's going to be a, a group of people that have been hit hard by COVID that really, they don't need the handout, they need the handup. They need the net just to get us from here to here. And while they're going through their, that transition, if we can give them the help they need, we keep them off of, um, out of poverty. And I think that that would be great for the people. And not only that, I'm typically opposed to overburden some federal programs that put our children and grandchildren in debt. But this money is going to get spent regardless. And if it doesn't get spent on a family in Utah County, it'll get spent on a family in Chicago. And so this money's gonna get spent regardless of whether or not we like it. We might as well help the children here.
Okay, thank you for that. That was incredible. Oh, for public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Great presentation, but more, I'm really, those, did you see the shoes and taz on? They're fabulous.
Thank you.
They really are. I don't know how you wear them, but it's okay. Anyway, for record, my name is Vic DeVano and uh my development company, uh, we had uh filed all of our documents to be heard by the Board of Adjustments. And uh we uh went in and then talked to uh Chris, the county assessor, because he's very familiar with these properties over the last twenty, twenty-five years. And as long as he's been the county assessor, which I think is now ten or twelve. But uh, so we uh went into and he agreed to meet with us in, by mid-November. And unfortunately, he came down with COVID. And uh by the time he came back and uh I, I've had my own lapses occasionally from uh, uh a severe brain concussion and some renal failure from a year ago that hit me, you know, a few days a month. And so I went up for some rehab for Thanksgiving and I came back the day after Thanksgiving and uh went over to uh Burl's, uh Bert's office, who's the administrator, the tax. And I don't know the exact title, but it's that. He's right over here in the building, but you all know who he is and you'll get to know him. And he um uh informed me that I would need to get the okay from, from Chris again, uh potentially to maybe open up the file. They call it opening, reopening the file that was closed, cause it wasn't heard. And uh I went back to Chris on Monday, the November thirtieth, very concerned about dates and times. And uh Chris said, please go back, tell him I have no problem with hearing these four, five, six properties you have, X, I'm very familiar with them and we could take care of them in a matter of twenty minutes or more. And I went back to Bert. And I went back to Bert, and he had an indigestion and bad turkey. And on Monday refused to reopen the file. Handed me the forms to uh, appeal to the state. And which I did appeal to the state, but the state has a major problem. There's been no hearing. And this could have been prevented easily. But so my question comes back to the commission is I would appreciate you looking into it and see how I have some type of hearing that I was originally scheduled with with Chris to be done and completed and information provided to Bert, and then if it's not satisfactory, then I can go back. And I don't know if the state's gonna accept that. I did have some communication with the state director, uh, Utah State Director in in Salt Lake City. And I'm waiting to hear anything further from them, but currently their requirement is that you, in order for them to take a look at it, you have had to have a hearing. So that's my dilemma. Uh, do you have any questions concerning that?
Well, the only question I have is, I'm I'm more familiar with the appeal process coming to us before it goes appealed to the state. I mean, I I think I'm correct on that, Dave, and and so
I I had no chance to do that because of the timing. I mean, I
So I'm I'm really not familiar. Usually if it goes to the state, sometimes the state will refer it back to us.
Right, and I think that's what she's going to do.
I think that's, that can be common, but I'm I'm used to appeal that comes here first before the appeal goes to the state.
Yeah, and we would have done that to you, but we we went into have the hearing this time with the county assessor, which probably out of, uh, as many years as Chris has been here, I've probably, they have a regular Board of Adjustment, then they'll have other things, and I've been able to have Chris participate or talk to Chris directly with that. And then he passes the paperwork back on to Bert and his group. And we we settle, you know, on what the appraised values are. But in this case, it never happened. Bert wouldn't open it back up. And and you know what? There's enough mental and physical things that have happened this year with COVID. I don't get it, okay? I mean, I really don't get it. And I haven't made any money this year. I've not made a damn dime. I've got my, some retirement thing that's very low that I don't get a lot at. And the year before, you know, we we were working in new projects and I've been working on the foundation for the new hospital and stuff, the, and the new medical school we've been working on. And so I was disappointed after all these years of of working here in the county that it was just absolutely, I won't open. I'm not opening hands me the paperwork. And I don't get it. I don't really get it because I've known him a long time, since I've been around and since he's been around. And whether you like somebody or not, I don't have any idea. I don't, didn't say anything about it, but just said, you gotta do this. And handed me the two pages I filed out. I sent them out. I was back east. I, you know, sent them, you know, via text and email. And I'm just waiting to hear what that, I told him I would be back today. I got back yesterday. So I'm expecting some decision by them tomorrow. This is the state. And I don't, Chris said he's happy to hear it. He's happy to talk to the state people and tell him that he had COVID. And he was not able to see me and hear me and do what he needed to do. So that's all I'm asking. I won't be redundant anymore. I think you get the gist, you know?
Yeah, Dave.
Dave?
I'll make a note. We'll just have to look into it.
Yeah, Dave, thank you very much. I mean, just, I don't, I don't get it, you know, I mean, because Chris, as the, uh, he's an elected official, has certain authority, but he has people that are in those positions to work out, and he handles, and they have some authority to be able to open, close files and whatnot, but I don't think they took into consideration Chris's situation health-wise. So that's all I'm asking.
Okay, do we have any additional public comment?
We don't see any.
Okay, seeing none, we're moved into our closed meeting. Thank you, everyone.